Hello.
Hi Abby.
How you doing?
Good, how about you?
I'm good. We are gonna go into closed session at Superintendent Comments. Kevin probably already told you.
Oh no, he has not, okay. Okay, and we are live streaming right now, so.
Okay.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yep, I'm gonna put myself on mute and turn my camera off.
Okay, that's good.
Bye.
Hi Daddy, can you hear me?
Yeah, hi.
Hi, just making sure everyone's ready to go.
Okay, thanks Jackie.
Uh huh.
Hi Kevin.
Hey Abby. Forgot to turn the volume on.
I forgot my piece of paper.
Alright. Looking for a flag. Looking for a flag.
Hello Alicia.
Hello.
Dawn had a last minute thing come up, so she won't be with us tonight.
I don't think this is gonna work.
Hi Jerry, hi Trevor. Get any sleep these days Trevor?
Sleep is precious.
Kevin, have you heard from anyone besides Dawn?
I have not heard from anyone.
Okay.
Um.
We still have a few minutes.
Just checking.
Yeah, I just checked my emails while Abby did make sure everybody, no one sent me, they couldn't find it, but I have not heard anything either.
Okay.
Got it. We have.
We can wait a couple more minutes, or we can start and see if anybody shows up. What is your pleasure Kevin?
Yeah, so it's three members, right?
Yeah, we couldn't take any action, but we can go through everything.
Yep, you're right. I would think that um we should move forward.
Okay.
Okay.
Abby?
Yes ma'am. Daddy, have you heard from Craig?
Uh, I couldn't hear what you said. No, I haven't heard from Craig or anyone.
Okay.
So Abby, I think without for to do an addendum with the vote, then we wouldn't be adding anything to the agenda. And I would even say that there would be no need for a closed session unless someone else is gonna show up.
Okay.
Okay.
That makes sense to me.
I agree with Kevin.
Yep, that's correct. Nothing to do about that.
Mm-hmm. Oh, you know what? I did get a message from Scott that he was not gonna be here tonight.
Okay.
I just started trying to go through as I was checking messages. But I have not received anything from uh. Didn't get anything from Craig or Brandon. And we know about Dawn. So then that's everybody.
Okay.
Can we go ahead and do this pledge allegiance?
Um, Tammy is trying to get us live streaming so that where our public meeting part is working. She's gonna let us know as soon as it's ready.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh.
I do have sound working, so you can go ahead and go. I mean, they've got sound, they can hear what's going on.
Thank you Tammy. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, let me stop sharing so we can see the screen.
Okay. Daddy, would you be willing to take roll call for us?
Sure. I remember everybody. Abby?
Yes.
Here. Alicia?
Here.
Uh Craig? Brandon? And Dawn? Who am I missing?
Um, Scott.
Scott.
Scott, sorry. Okay, thank you, we have three.
Okay. So we don't have a quorum. So I think we'll just go ahead and go through the agenda as it is, and if someone pops on before we're done, we'll address any, the consent agenda or the addenda at that time.
Okay.
Okay. Um, would you, Kevin, would you like to go over the norms of collaboration?
Uh, just a reminder that we use those seven norms for pausing, paraphrasing, inquiry and probe, and putting ideas on the table, paying attention to self and others, and presuming positive intentions.
Thank you. So we're gonna skip over addenda, and the next thing on the agenda is 2.01 communications from the public. Tammy, do we have any public?
There are none.
Thank you. Um, we will table the consent agenda for the next meeting until we have a quorum. So we're gonna go on to 5.01 ECOL presentation. Kevin, that's you.
Thank you Abby, and we have Jerry's here with Trevor. Jerry's got the opportunity to present, which is the Extended Continuity of Learning Plan. And he can also explain where and how this has evolved and why we have one. Jerry?
Thank you Mr. Simmons. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to talk a little bit about the ECOL plan, which stands for the Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan. Um, and more specifically about the um, monthly reconfirmation report that I'm about to give you for the month of November. So you've heard of this before. Um, we were lucky enough that you approved our ECOL plan back in early October and late September. We had a couple meetings where we reviewed and made sure we were doing things right. And that comes from the Governor's Bill 927. And um, it's now part of the State School Act. And basically what it says is that the school will have to report to the state of Michigan through our ISD and through monthly reports to SEPI. That what our plan of instructing students is during this time of a COVID pandemic. So you, as a board, approved our initial ECOL plan early on, and there has been no changes since then. And when I give my report, you'll see that reflected in there. And that's the number one thing on this report, is that we have to show any changes in our instructional delivery. An exception would be, we put in our plan that small changes that are required to keep people safe, for example, the shutting down of a fifth grade classroom, or the temporary shutting down of a building because of a COVID exposure, would not warrant a whole new plan. Because it's in our plan that we will do things to keep people safe. Um, the second part of this report requires that we have um, a presentation of a general statement of public comments concerning our plan. And those public comments happen in two ways. One is the public comment section of monthly board meetings. And the other is on our website, we posted the COVID learning plan, and we put a survey with it. And so as people read the plan or these monthly resubmittals, they have an opportunity to give us feedback. And so we would take those feedback surveys, the comments I hear during board meetings, and they would be put into real easy bullet statements that we would present in this one-page document that you're gonna see in just a moment. The final section, which to me is most important, is the percentage of students that have received two-way interactions with a Penfield staff member. And this is to show that we're staying connected with students, and that there is a staff member or members that are reaching out to our, our population of kids, K-12. So a little bit about that one. You're gonna see some numbers here, and those numbers are unique. So next month, you're gonna hear from Trevor and from Angina about our FTE count day, and that's all about finance, that's all about budgeting. But mine are more about, are we connecting with a student? So if a student is only a two-hour-a-day student with us, that might be, you know, one-third of an FTE. But in my numbers, they're one, they're a full one. So my numbers don't represent population, they don't represent anything dealing with budget, it's just our staff taking care of kids. So when you see those numbers, that's what it's about. Any questions yet before I throw up the report? And the report's a one-pager, it's much easier to show it than talk about it. Alrighty, well, why don't I share, and don't be afraid to interrupt me, but you'll have to speak up because I will only be able to see the report, I won't be able to see you waving at me. And. Here. Blown up large and in charge is our Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan Reconfirmation Report for November. So the first part that I talked about was how are we going to present instruction? So this is the original um, plan that you approved a couple months ago, and it says that our students in sixth through 12th grade will be instructed 100% virtually. And our K-5 students have two ways that they'll be instructed. One is also 100% virtually. The other method would be a blended method, which would be two days in person with three days being virtual, and that's that Wednesday included. Was presenting to us. And it says first that many wanted us to bring sixth through 12th grade students back to either a blended format or 100% in attendance. And there was also a discussion about students with IEPs as a separate group to that consideration. And we had some that also voiced an opinion that the current method of teaching students to maintain safe distance in light of a recent surge should be maintained. So there's were two different tracks of our public's thought as we went through the last month. And the part that I liked the most, and I think it's a point of us to celebrate, and this is the part that Trevor and I worked together on, is four weeks of two-way interaction rates. And if you take a look at this, you'll notice that our two-way interactions with students is above 90% every week. And the standard by the state of Michigan is 75%. So we are well above that expected amount, and we also said, okay, if it's, what would it be if we counted one two-way interaction? Because we do have some students we share with other entities, and maybe we only meet with them once, or interact with them once during that week. And those numbers were 97 and 98% consistently. So our two-way interaction rates show that we're reaching out to kids, we're making contact with more than nine out of every 10 students, and I really, I thought that was a point to celebrate. So this document will be posted on our webpage tomorrow morning. Um, unless there's some big change that occurs during the course of this meeting, I'll send our report, this included, to the state of Michigan and SEPI, which is the organization they use to communicate that. And we will be good until our December presentation, but this will happen monthly.
Jerry, I do have a question about the two-way interaction rates.
Okay.
This is Abby.
Yep.
So do you also break that down by grade level or by building? Is it pretty consistent across the board?
I, honestly, I don't have those numbers in front of me right now. As part of Count Day, I know we did look at those that way. Um, Trevor and I did, and we did present spot checks to the building principals, but as far as this report goes, no, that they don't require us to do it at that level.
I'm just interested to know if there is a difference in the number of student interactions by grade level or by building.
You mean by, like a percentage?
I can, and actually I can interrupt real quick. I can have those, I don't have that right here and now, but I can provide those to Kevin to share out. We do have that by building. And that was, like Jerry said, a part of the Count Day.
Sure.
Documentation that we had to provide.
I'm assuming there's not a big difference, right?
No, no, I would say we're certainly in the ballpark. You don't, you don't see a big dip at any one building with, with participation. At least the state's expectation is, is we're talking about one contact, at least one contact per week is what we're talking about here. Now, we strive for two or more. That's the state's expectation that we're gonna provide that, but as far as counting for percentage, it's at least one per week. And then the number 75%, that replaces the old 75% expectation for attendance. So that's, that's kinda where that comes from, so that's what we have now.
And Abby, if I could chime in with, with Trevor, that 93% or 97% almost requires we have consistent numbers in every building. It's just, you know, otherwise it would be a lot lower, but yeah, with, between Trevor and I, we certainly can get, you know, those numbers around.
Can you also get like, um, how many have like fives, two-way interactions, or different numbers, or you just really count one and two, and that's what the teachers log?
Yeah, so the system we use is called Illuminate, Abby, and I could get into weeds and talk about that for hours if you'd like, but that system is set up to honor one or two, and there is a way to add more after that.
We don't need a bunch of extra work.
Well, um, yeah, and I, I think we've got teachers that are, they might even be making daily contact with every student more than once. But they're logging in what we've expected them to log in.
Got it.
So I think it's a good question, and I certainly have a handful that would have that, that, and if you notice on this, it says two or, two or more. Because we did have several with three and with four, but it would be the exception, not the rule, to be documented this way.
Right, got it. Okay, that's all the questions I had. Alicia or Daddy, do you have any questions?
No, I, that was a great presentation.
No, I don't either. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Simmons, that's my report for this month, and I look forward to doing it again in December.
Awesome, that'll be December the 14th, and thanks Jerry, good job there you and Trevor with the numbers. Awesome. That'll be December the 14th. And thanks, Jerry. Good job there, you and Trevor with the numbers. But the presentation was great. Thank you. And the financial expenditure report, unless members have a question. Angina's here to ask, answer questions, but that report is a report that is usually there for the board to read through. If there are no questions about the financial expenditure report, then I will turn it back over to you, Abby.
Okay. So this is a chance for the public to have comments based on the ECOL presentation? Are there any public out there, Tammy?
We have one person that did turn in a thing about 6:35, which is kind of late, but I sent the link to them. But I do not see them on the call at this point.
Okay. Then I think, Kevin, we're at 8.01 superintendent comments.
Okay, I have, um, a few things that's already in the comments there that the board's able to read through. I will mention the fact that there are districts in our area who are meeting with their boards, and some have already sent their messages out based on the restrictions that have come from the health department. And after meeting with the health department today, they said the situation is not getting any better. The cases are, continue to go up. 4% was the number that was supposed to be a pretty ugly situation. And then you want to look at possible remote situations with kids. However, right now it's at 14% and still going up. The, um, the, and I just got word Marshall is going to go virtual until January the 18th. And so with that being said, we know that we have our students in situations to where classes close, the buildings have closed, we've had situations that we've gone back and forth with trying to continue to offer the in-person opportunity for students. So with the members that we have here and knowing that's the case, that we will continue down this road unless the board says otherwise.
Simmons, you have any questions for Kevin?
I do.
Yeah.
Kevin, um, excuse me, with the new, um, governor's, uh, report, she's closing down the schools for, for what, three days? I don't remember the whole thing, but are we going to be included in that with not, it said, the high school kids?
Right. Right now, yeah, I'm sorry, Daddy, you're right. Right now it says the high school kids for three weeks starting Wednesday. And the reason it's three weeks starting Wednesday is it gives two weeks after Thanksgiving for what you would consider being quarantine to where there's no contact with students at the high school with any of the other staff or any other students. Yet that did not include our K-8. And since it does not include our K-8, that means we will continue with having the situation that we're in right now, where sometimes we'll be without staff and we will have to close classrooms. Sometimes we will have staff that, um, at the building, where the building would have to close. Just as a reminder, the students in the building are not the ones who are causing the closures. So yes, we have students coming from the outside to where, from their community, and they are getting, um, tested positive. And then we have to backtrack because they were at a birthday party or Halloween party of some type. We also have adults who are also going out and being with others on the outside and then coming back. So those situations, that's what's causing the closures in our buildings and in our classes.
So Kevin, if I can just restate that a different way, the PPE and the social distancing in the classroom that we're doing is actually working. That most of, for the most part, that most of the infection is actually coming from people's contacts that are having outside of school.
And, and that's correct. And, uh, just to add that we have students who are coming to school, and they are infected, or they are, have tested positive, or they've been quarantined. But the community and the parents, and it's not just in Penfield, but it's across the county and across the state. They send their students to school anyway, and then it causes us to have to close either the whole class or the whole building. That's, that's what's occurred over the past few weeks. And as the health department's saying, it's just getting to where more infections are happening.
And, and I think we expected some of that to begin with. We just didn't know at what level, right? Because that was the whole reason you set it up that way, so that you could just close one classroom at a time.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Thank you both. I just want to say thanks to both of you for that clarification.
Okay, thanks, Daddy.
We have had Craig join us. Hi, Craig.
Hello.
You are our fourth member, which gives us quorum. Thank you for, for getting here. Appreciate that.
Oh, my apologies for being late.
That's okay.
I would, um, go ahead, Abby.
Do you have other comments? Would you like to go back and visit the items on our agenda that we skipped over because we didn't have quorum?
I would think that, um, not at this time. Nope. I would think that we'll stay with the agenda as it is.
Okay. Would, would it be all right, the pleasure of the board, if we went back and took care of the consent agenda? Um, so I'm going to just go back up to 3.0, 3.0 consent agenda. That includes approve special board minutes, approve committee of the whole board minutes, approve regular school board minutes, approve check registers, approve electronic funds transfer, approve the superintendent evaluation, approve the desk proposal, approve the annual summer tax resolution, and approve the calendar of changing the regular board meeting to December 14th next month. I would entertain a motion to accept that.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Alicia. Daddy, would you like to take roll call?
Yes, just a minute.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, roll call for the consent agenda. Before I do that, Abby, I'd like to have you note in the minutes that Craig joined us at 6:56 PM.
Thank you very much for noting that time. I hadn't paid attention to that.
Thank you, Daddy. I also got that. So thanks for confirming.
Okay, thanks. All right. First one is Craig.
Aye.
This is for the vote of the consent agenda.
Yes, thank you. Aye.
Okay, you said yes?
Yes.
Abby?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Daddy, yes. That gives me Brandon, Dawn, and Scott.
We're absent.
Absent. So there's four yeses.
Thank you. That motion passes, so we don't have to have that big list of things on next month's meeting. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're at board comments. I'm open for board comments. I wanted to make a point to congratulate our new board members that were elected at the beginning of this month. And I'm looking forward to meeting each one of them and getting to know them. So congratulations to all four new members.
I'll say congratulations to them all too, and to you and, you and Craig for having, having to work with them and teach them.
Maybe Daddy will have to do a board class or something for us.
I don't think so.
Nice try, huh? Okay, are there any other board comments?
No, thank you.
I make a mo-
I have none.
Thank you, Alicia. We are going to miss you.
I just want to say-
Too.
We'll see you one more month, though. Go ahead, Daddy.
I just want to make a, make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Seven o'clock PM.
I second that.
Motion made and seconded? Shall, shall we all just say aye?
Aye.
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 Aye, or aye.
Motion passed. Thank you, everybody. Shortest meeting on history.
Thank you. Have a wonderful night, everybody.
Bye.
Very nice.